Good evening. I am Mayor Pro Tem, Edward Wood, and I am calling this regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, September 15th, 2025 to order.
Just right.
City Clerk, can I have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Boykin?
Here.
Councilmember McCloskey?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Grassi?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wood?
Present.
Mayor Figaro is excused. Mayor Pro Tem, you have a corral.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Boykin, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Mayor Pro Tem, it would be my pleasure. Would you all please rise for our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are now on item number five, public comments. City Clerk, is there anybody online so far for public comment?
Mayor, there's, Mayor Pro Tem, there's no one online.
Okay, and you have the directions online. Excellent, thank you. We'll take comments from the chambers. So far, I have one person signed up with Chris Saunders. Please come forward. And, of course, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Push the button and get the green light. I'm Chris Saunders, and of course, I'm from University Place Parks and Recreation Foundation and the process of the playground. Greetings, city council members. I'm very glad to say the family restrooms are in over at Cirque Park. Maybe I'm ceiling Jack's thunder, I don't know. But they got in last week, and the stripes on the parking lot are marked out, ready to be finalized. I am here to give a few final comments, and we can wrap this project up. It may be my, it would be my hope that building playgrounds for both able-bodied and those with disabilities would be the build standard for University Place going forward. If we do not do that, we tend to leave out 15% of our children and adults supervising kids at the playground who have mobility devices. So something to consider as you continue to guide this city. Second, I want to give the credit where credit is due. I am a follower of Jesus, and he is the one who led this process. Neither I nor anyone on University Place Parks and Recreation Foundation Board were experts. We on community projects, on playground development, nor fundraising. But my husband and I, but for my husband and I, this was a matter of daily prayer, asking the Lord for strength, provision, help, and wisdom. I believe he answered those prayers. Oh, wait, we have a playground. As a follower of Christ, we are instructed well that we need to serve. We do so when we serve those with disabilities, the hungry, the sojourners, the sick, and those in prison, the widows, the orphans, the vulnerable populations around us. In Matthew 24:40, truly I say to you, as you did it to one of the least of these my brothers, you did it to me. Often forgotten populations, we were so glad to be part of this. I want to thank each of you, the city council and the community, for your support and the privilege to see this community project through from conception to completion. It took three and a half years. Thank you so much. And I sign off. I did it in three minutes.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciate everything you've done. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to provide public comment? All right, seeing none, that closes public comment. Moving on to items 6A through E, our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda, please?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going into item seven, council consideration, the 27th Street Business District Plan. We have Kevin Briskie from our Community and Economic Development Director to come and provide statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council Kevin Briskie with the Community and Economic Development Departments. Before you tonight for council consideration is a resolution adopting the 27th Street Business District Plan. The 27th Street Plan is part of a regional growth center adopted by the city and the Puget Sound Regional Council in 2017. The regional growth center includes three sub-districts, the Northeast Business District, the 27th Street Business District, and the Town Center Business District. The Northeast Business District Subarea Plan was approved by the city council about a year ago. The 27th Street Plan is now under for your consideration tonight. In the Town Center Subarea Plan, we are currently in the process right now of doing, and we're about a quarter of the way through that. Now, the plan, if you think about it, we've discussed this a few times, but I'm just going to go over a little bit of the history and then take some questions. The plan, the subarea plan, if you think about it from kind of a larger picture, we have our city's comprehensive plan, which is kind of the guiding document for all the city's goals, policies, and actions that filters into the city's municipal code. The regional growth center plan was a very broad plan for the three districts. These district plans get a little drilled down a little deeper into the districts. There is a list of recommended actions within the plan as well. Now, those recommend, that recommended actions aren't necessarily binding, per se, as they are just kind of guided, recommended actions that would take further council consideration to enact policies relating to those plans. In other words, you might direct the planning commission to consider one of these, or it helps guide staff and future development in those areas. The process for the plan included an advisory group that had held four meetings. The advisory group consisted of both business and property owners within the district, met four times over that to help develop the plan and come up with some of the recommendations in there, also the vision statement. There was a public survey that included 681 responses. We also had a setup at the Christmas tree lighting last year where we just talked to people that came up, and we showed portions of the plan and talked about the 27th Street. And we'll say we had a lot of people that came up and were excited that there was, you know, action, talk about the 27th Street in general. The planning commission held three meetings to go over the plan before making their recommendation to the city council for adoption. One of those meetings did include a public hearing. The plant, or the city council, met with the city council on May 5th. If you remember, Manny Roberts from OTAC, which is a city consultant who's working on the plan, presented kind of the overall plan and went over things from the market analysis to the complete plan. And then at the July 7th meeting, we drilled deeper, and we went into each one of the recommended actions individually with the city council. And also, if you remember, at that meeting, we had Jack Eklund and Jordan Martin with the engineering department to discuss traffic and, you know, projected growth in that area and how that relates to traffic volumes in that corridor. So in conclusion, the 27th Street District, you know, lies within the city's regional growth center, together with the Northeast and the Town Center. The regional growth center is an area where the city's growth and redevelopment will be concentrated over the future. And centers are a hallmark of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 and their regional growth strategy. And that concludes my presentation on this and available for any questions.
Okay, are there any technical questions or questions about the statement? Okay, we have Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Kevin, thank you for that summary. My question is, is in all those public hearings that you've had, as I recall, looking at my notes, it's all been very positive, and I like that. But I'm sure in that process, she may have heard some concerns or negatives. I don't recall ever hearing those. Do you recall if we had any at all, and if so, what were some of the highlights of those?
There is at least somewhat of a summary in the, at the end, which is a summary of the survey results. I'd say, in general, as you stated, most comments were positive overall on the plan and just excited to see things happening on 27th, see improvements happen on the street from, a lot of the questions came around walkability and other modes of transportation and traffic questions. So I'd say if there was any negatives that we heard, some of it was, they, people didn't feel safe walking up and down 27th Street, which led to some of the recommendations in the plan to try to help improve walkability. Some of the people didn't feel safe because there wasn't a, there's not a lot of crosswalks on 27th Street there. So those were, I'd say, some of the, I guess you'd say, negatives in the plan. Some of it was speeding, those sort of comments. Usual comments about, that we hear in a lot of surveys that we do, people wanting more restaurants, cafes, those sort of things.
Are there any ideas being floated about to help mitigate some of those concerns, especially the crosswalks and the speeding?
Yes, I mean, it's, it, some of the recommendations talk about that and some potential ways. It doesn't get as specific on that. It basically has recommendations to try to improve those things. And there's plenty of different ideas on widening sidewalks, providing additional crossings. However, this was at at least a high enough level where it didn't get down into the fine-grained details of where that should go. That would take further, further study for those things.
Okay. And then my last question is, in the plan, I don't recall seeing any ideas being floated about needs for eminent domain to develop that district. Are those in your plans?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, let's move to the public comment portion. Is there anyone online interested in providing public comment for this?
Don't see anyone online, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, is there anyone in the room who wish to provide public comment? All right, seeing none, this closes the public comment period. Then we move to council consideration. We'll go ahead and take further questions or comments from council.
Do I make a motion first for that?
Oh, absolutely. My apologies. Go ahead. Thank you.
That's okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the 27th Street Business District Subarea Plan to establish the specific provisions that align with redevelopment, activity occurring in the district, and the city's already adopted code provisions.
Second.
Thank you. Now, let's move to council comment. Councilmember McCloskey?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am really excited about this plan. It will increase customer experience and overall opportunities for business growth. And as you indicated, in a safe and welcoming environment, that will create a lot of vibrancy. And it also indicated that it will still keep some of that feel that is current, that we enjoy currently on 27th Street, while in improving some of the areas along the way organically. And as, as everything evolves over time, we're hoping that a lot of these things will come to fruition so that more and more people could go down in the 27th Business Corridor, feel safe, walk, and enjoy that space as they have in our Town Center. So it would be another synergized strategic move to help improve our lifestyle in UP and hopefully bring customers and other people outside of our city to hopefully enjoy the added restaurants and in the plaza and open space that hopefully this will create. So I'm excited, just have to be patient and let things evolve. But I'm glad we're setting the groundwork and the footprint for that to happen.
Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you so much for getting this to the finish line. I am supportive. I had the opportunity to speak with a developer that's working on a eightplex, would that be townhomes?
Twelve.
Twelve. And he's encouraged and excited about this plan, and I'm happy that they're bringing that development to 27th Street. But the goals I'm most excited for, from the memo, support and encourage small business opportunities such as dining and retail. I think that's going to be vital. It can really enhance that, I think, provide diverse housing choices to meet the demand for a variety of household sizes and incomes, very important, and enhance the sense of community by establishing a place for gathering. Those three goals are my, are highlights for me of this plan, so I just wanted the community to hear that and the focus of that. But I'm optimistic that this is going to be a good step forward. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. You know, when we first started developing Town Center, there were a lot of folks, not a lot, but there was enough that had loud voices, that were concerned that that would really destroy the, the characteristic of our community. Yet, when I was out at National Night Out, it was overwhelmingly positive, feedback that I got, that people were happy with the direction the city has gone and the development that we've had here. I'm excited about the 27th District because it brings business to our community, and it kind of puts the icing on the cap, if you will. I know down to our north or up to our north, we have a city called the City of Destiny. I think University Place will be the City of Destination, and I like that. And I think this is going to add to it. So I applaud the work that you and the staff and all the community folks that were involved in this process to bring this one to fruition. So looking forward to some exciting change down along an area of University Place that has been, for a very long time, neglected. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I too welcome where we are with this opportunity. The economic development piece is always primary for me. I do have a question, though I wanted to ask of you, Kevin Briskie, regarding housing impacts, and specifically in the 27th Street Business District, regarding HB 1110 and the expectation of how we have a responsibility and obligation to look at more variety and diversity in our housing. And as I think about what the 27th Business District offers us in terms of the more likelihood of that variety being available, I just wondered if there's anything that you can think of that is going to make that more than casually challenging for us?
Yes, Councilmember Boykin, so are you asking questions just about kind of housing choices that might be coming?
Exactly, because when we look at the character, and let me be really clear, when we look at the character, it's predominantly single-family residential housing that mostly mirrors what University Place has been traditionally in terms of our 30 years. The likelihood of the diversity of housing in that space can be certainly interesting as we look at, look at the obligations and responsibilities that we have. So I was just hopeful that if there was a comment that you had around that or a way that you could encourage our thinking in that direction that could make it positive and inviting, didn't want to miss opportunity to have you weigh in in that regard.
Yeah, a couple of things on housing, and Councilmember Grassi talked about housing choices as one of the recommendations in here, providing more housing, housing choices in that area. One of the things with, one of the recommendations in the plan talks a little bit about kind of the density in that area. If you think about the 27th Street from Bridgeport, and I've talked about this, I might be repeating myself a little bit, but again, if you think about it down at, from, at 27th and Bridgeport, and then down at 27th and Grandview, you have kind of larger parcels, and the mixed-use zones are much larger there. And then it kind of has a dumbbell effect where it gets really narrow through the, through the center of the, of the district, and it makes it kind of more difficult to get some of those housing choices in the district because of that. One of the recommendations is for potential future consideration is that there is some defining areas that would go maybe a block, you know, to 28th in one direction or 26th in the other direction, where it is a recommendation to potentially consider in the future where you might allow some more of those housing options, such as in House Bill 1110.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure that it wasn't any particular idea that council might have, but what we might be able to look at based upon, again, 1110 requirements, as well as what it is that the 27th Street Business District offers us in terms of geography. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I had. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. That's all I had, my comments. First, just, I'd like to thank you and your team and for doing this. I know this represents months of work, many months, and that includes, of course, your team, the contractor and the commissioners who are involved in assessing this product. And I really like it when I read through it, I can, especially when you get to recommendations, you can really visualize where the city would like to go with this area. And it's, and I'll say the word everybody else has said here, but it's exciting. I like seeing it, and it's, and I would encourage our community, and this is going to get made available online, I assume, correct?
It's online right now.
It's online right now, so.
As a draft.
As a draft.
To be clear.
So I would encourage our community, if anybody's watching or sitting here, that they get online and take a look at this. Parts of it are, you know, a lot of they get online and take a look at this. Parts of it are, you know, a lot of, you know, basic demographic and all kinds of other information. But Section 5 is recommendations. And I'd encourage people to get in there and take a look at it. It's a, it's a great read, and I really hope it comes to fruition over time. So, thank you. Is there any further comment from council? All right, seeing none, I'll call a vote. City Clerk?
Yes.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Grassi?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Wood?
Aye.
Fair vote result, five ayes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, City Manager and Council Comments and Reports. City Manager?
Yes. Mayor Protam, and the council, this report is talking about one project, the 36th Street Roundabout Project, if you remember the council. Of course you do, because the council awarded the bid for that project earlier this year. And I'm pleased to report that, that project, which by the way is funded in large part by a state grant from the Transportation Improvement Board, and designed in-house by our own engineering team, that road is now open to traffic. It was closed down so that they could build it and as quickly as possible and get it open as close to possible as school opening we missed by a week or so. But it's been paved, it was paved Friday, opened Friday, or paved last week, opened Friday to traffic, and will continue to remain open to traffic while they continue to do the additional work to finish the project up, including the landscaping, the lighting, et cetera. So I'm, I've seen some aerial shots and drone shots of the construction, and it's fascinating. We'll show that at some point. And, but that was a team effort. And, you know, it involved the neighbors who brought that to our attention due to the safety issues we had on that roadway. We pursued a grant through Transportation Improvement Board. We were very lucky, I should say, like, our engineering team did a marvelous job at competing for that grant. And over $700,000 in TIB money was secured in what I would say was rapid fashion. And we brought that forward, got it quickly designed in front of council, and this council awarded that bid. And it is now open to traffic. So take, take a drive-through before it's completed, and then take a drive-through after it's completed. So hopefully, it will, you know, you'll be pleased with the results. And I think it'll have a major impact on safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And for council comments, we'll just go from my left to right. So Councilmember Boykin, if you could start us off.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. I appreciate it. Certainly had the opportunity to be in some places that still, at the very same time, excites me and at the same time, makes me a little solemn. But let me just start off first with the reflection of our 9/11 remembrance event. Obviously, well done. Hats off to West Pierce Fire, as well as to those that came out to make it a point to reflect and remember. It is not lost on me about the devastation that happens when we do the reflection, but it's also important to acknowledge the resilience that happens every moment that we've had a chance to continue. And so certainly in that spirit of reverence, it is also, it's also still very hard. So I just wanted to continue to ask for special consideration and thoughts for those families that certainly continue to see the events around that reflection, as well as the opportunity for us to, one more time in our life, see how we can make things easier, better, and more good that we can offer in our reflective spaces. Also wanted to share that today I had an opportunity to listen to some really good news based upon some really good work that's happened inside the City of University Place as it continues to look at our fiduciary responsibilities and how we carry those actions forward. I'm not going to take anybody's thunder, because I'm going to let that be on behalf of staff that has earned those accolades. But it was a pleasure to be part of the meeting in here, that unqualified opinion about how we handle the business of, in the City of University Place and its finances in particular. Mayor Protam, that's all I'm going to offer for my report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember McCloskey.
All right, thank you. I too was at the 9/11 event. And it's also a privilege to be there in community and to be humble enough to try to be compassionate and empathize with the terror attack that happened on that particular day. If you're old enough to remember, you probably remember where you were at that point in time. When it occurred, it was quite unbelievable, but it was reality. And how our lives have changed since then dramatically. I, for one, was a little more naive and free-spirited. And now I'm more cautious and pragmatic because, you know, we need to be to protect our safety of our country, what our beliefs are, and how we're going to manage to live and protect those ideals going into the future. I went to the Zoo Trek Authority meeting, and unfortunately, couldn't stay till the end. But they did, so everything looks, looks good. So we should be very proud of what the zoo is doing. They're not only great at taking care of the animals, but they're also great at taking care of our finances to ensure that the animal's health and well-being and their life at the zoo and the track are, are happy lives. And there is one item that I was concerned about, and they're concerned about it as well. It's in regards to the polar bear. Astraea lycra are getting to that age where they would like to have a partner. So they're at that reproductive age. So they may be, they will leave the zoo at one point in time to find their mates somewhere. Unfortunately, the other zoos in the nation are very limited in, in the animals that they can bring in and take out. So they're having issues with not so much space, but just for the logistics and accommodations through the Fish and Wildlife Organization. And what they're primarily afraid of is that the gene pool within the United States may be compromised because internationally, we can't bring in polar bears into our country. There's polar bears in Europe, polar bears, especially in Canada, that really need to come, they're, in fact, they have more polar bears than they have space. So they have the opposite problem that we do. And so trying to work with the Fish and Wildlife and change some of the federal rules and regulations so that that can, that can happen would be helpful. And as things are progressing forward with the limited amount of bears in the United States, our polar bear exhibit may be vacant for quite a few months or years until they figure out the best use of the polar bear exhibit at the zoo. Their belief is for rehabilitation and also for transient bears that may come into it. But anyway, they're trying to figure out that. And I'm hoping that since, you know, pragmatically, we paid a lot of money for this polar bear exhibit, and it's only about a couple of years old. So I'm hoping that we can sustain it. And I also offered, you know, what do you need to do to help encourage polar bears to come in, but also how can you enhance the polar bear exhibit so that other zoos will be more encouraged to loan their polar bears to us? Anyway, that's the Zoo Trek meeting. I had an interesting opportunity, which I thought was going to be a Pierce County Sewer Group meeting on Day Island. It didn't turn out quite like that. It was basically, let's complain about the sewer project on Day Island. That's going to enhance the sewer and make, and allow the sewer to come up to modern, modern standards, which is, as you know, Day Island is in a critical area, and we need to have the surety that our sewer pipes will not fail. So there's a lot of questions and concerns. So I reached out to Pierce County, not, not the sewer, I went through other channels. Hopefully, it was the proper way to do it, to get a, someone on the island to create a meeting to answer the questions and, and just make, make sure that, you know, they're not going to rip up the island, they're going to put the island back together, and that the cost of the project is in alignment with the needs that are currently at need, on the island today. As, as we all know, on the dais, every single winter, they have to get a generator down at the pump station because it doesn't function properly. So it's a critical need, and I hope that we can get that project done sooner than later. I was also at the opportunity to go to a ribbon cutting, Beirut Spikes, at Town Center, along with Councilmember Grassi, who did the welcoming speech. Wonderful job. And the food, if you haven't eaten there, is amazing. If you like Lebanese food, it's, it's the place to go. Not only in UP, but in the region. I had the opportunity to go to an Up for Art meeting. Their next concert is going to be somewhere in mid-November in the atrium. They're still trying to figure out their vision, which direction they're going to take, and also how, most importantly, how they're going to fundraise to keep their organization alive. And so hopefully, we'll have a meeting upcoming, and that can, we can figure out that direction there. University Place Historical Society did a soft grand opening of their beautiful, wonderful museum. They fundraised over $350,000 to get this museum and home retrofitted so that the, the public can view UP's history, opportunity to have a place to archive it for future generations. They will be open, I believe, it's the first Saturday of every month, for a few hours. So if you haven't had an opportunity to check it out and also see the Woolits canoe that's displayed there, please do. And this isn't in University Place, it's in Tacoma. It was at the Chinese, was it, Reclamation Center? And down at, on Fossil Waterway, it was called the Moon Festival in celebration of, of the moon, and also in celebration of their, their life and also their advocacy to ensure that that history is not lost and that history will not be repeated. And some of the wonderful work that they're doing in, in language, culture, and, and events. This event in particular was wonderful to attend. They had lots of booths, lots of activities in each booth that were unique and interesting. And as you learned in some, you got to create a Chinese lantern and other, other things. You got to learn about their culture and their history, and just a great appreciation of just, just who the people really are. So, and they're working on getting a pavilion so they can have events there as well. So they're looking for fun, funding to that. So check out their site, and maybe you can give a gift to help bring their dream of a pavilion to life. And while, while I was there, I, the Pierce County Library had, which I think would be of interest to council sitting on the dais, tomorrow at 6:00 at our library, they're going to have what they call Priced Out. It's fear and resistance in our state in regard to the mobile home parks. People, organizations are buying out the mobile home parks, and then they're pricing out the residents. So essentially, the residents need to find other housing or they become homeless. So this is their story, it's a documentary about what is currently happening. It's, it was created by PBS. And with that, I'll conclude my council comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I don't think I could say it any more eloquent about the importance and significance of 9/11, other than what Councilmember Boykin and McCloskey have already said. So I'll, I will pass on those comments. I did have two items tonight to share. I'm going to defer one to Councilmember Grassi, which leaves that I recently had the opportunity to, on behalf of the council, to attend the SHAPE meeting. In there, they have already started working on their 2026 legislative priority agenda. And my hope is that as we go through it over at SHAPE, and we go through it here at the city, that will certainly have some synergy between the two. But I'll hit some of the highlights that we're looking at at SHAPE. One has to do with workforce housing on the Accelerator Program, and that is looking for construction costs and decreasing construction costs and increasing affordability for housing. The other is to continue funding the Pierce County Affordable Housing Projects. If you recall, last year, we gave to the tune, I believe it was $900,000, that plus that went into that project, and it has already started construction and bringing that to fruition. Another priority is going to be continuing the progress to decrease the cost of affordable housing construction and funding those. As far as active engagement goes with SHAPE, they're looking at several agenda items. One is expanding the senior and disabled property owner tax exemption. If you recall, last fall, I think it was, we had a, we hosted here at City Hall a program for our seniors on how to gain access to decreasing their property taxes by getting the tax exemption in place. The other is on, is SHAPE opposes the recreational vehicle bill, which was House Bill 1443. It's coming back this year, which would require cities to allow two RVs per property within their jurisdictions. So the concern they have is if you had two, two homes, two ADUs, two RVs, that would be one lot. So picture that. So that's coming back. They oppose that. They're looking at supporting construction for the workforce development, investment in rental assistance and eviction preventions, capital for housing, especially local affordable housing funding, and then funding for pre-approved ADUs. So we looked at that agenda. We'll be back to vote on that at the next meeting that we have. But that's the direction that they're going. And that is really all I had to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I concur with Councilmember Fleming and the remarks that we've heard this evening regarding September 11th. Those were eloquent and poignant. And I, I concur and thank Wes Pierce and our partners there for creating such a wonderful ceremony for us to be a part of. I thought Chief Burke's comments were just excellent as well, to pause and remember and honor that day. Beautifully said. So, thank you. I also want to thank Chris Saunders for her comments this evening and the work her organization has done. I appreciated her comments so much, and so glad to see it at the finish line. But I'm just grateful for active residents that come and see and do the official pass-off. But she worked so hard and others. So thank you for being here tonight, Chris. I had a great meeting with our Nantucket West residents. I see one here this evening. And I want to say thank you for your patience as we've been trying to mitigate some issues that they've been having next to our wonderful Cirque Park as it's seen increased use. Cirque Park as it's seen increased use. Thank you to Jack and Tony and their team, and they're getting some mitigation efforts already in place and underway. I think that was well received, so we'll see how that goes. Thank you for making that possible. Always great to be in homes and meet new friends, so thank you for making that possibility. Was delighted, as Councilmember McCloskey said, to be at Bayroot Bites ribbon cutting and want to welcome them officially into our Town Center businesses. Great food. I want to thank Adam, the owner, and for moving his family. He just moved from Everett to University Place, so he is officially a University Place resident as well as business owner. So delicious food, as Councilmember McCloskey said. Also Shell Station, our Shell Station has new owners, so I was happy to be there for their new ribbon cutting. And if you are like me and don't like this weather, the rain as it changes, I encourage you to visit Shell as they will still pump the gas for you. It's a delight. And so I want to thank them for being a part of this. I also attended the UP Historical Society museum opening and such a, just a treasure to have in our community. I loved seeing the history. Can't wait to take my daughter and my son, and they've worked so hard. And so I was grateful to be a part of that. I got to be number two on the sign-in, which is, has to be something, some type of record. I've never been number two in anything, so it was great. The Brainier Animal Eye Clinic, we're cutting the ribbon on that this Thursday, I believe, and it might be Friday.
Friday.
So, Friday. Friday. So welcoming them to our community, I encourage you to come and be a part of that new business. I got to also attend the Home-Based Business Reception along with Councilmember Boykin and Councilmember McCloskey and Mayor Protem here at Happy Duo and want to thank our Home-Based Businesses. Also, the UP Rotary was there, telling us about their new revibrancy of their organization. So that was a wonderful time to be with those business owners, and I thank them for their commitment to University Place. I also want to thank our Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, who hosted, and we were able to host in University Place just yesterday, a conversation on peace and politics. And it was an honor to host her, as it always is, but it was wonderful to be here, have her here in our city and have such a candid dialogue open for our community at such a wonderful time. And I thank her for her leadership and being available and willing to host this conversation in our city. It was such an honor to be able to host her. As to the remarks that Councilmember Fleming deferred to me, and I thank you for that, I, on a personal note, on Saturday, our community lost one of the greatest servants of this community we've seen, Rob Maskow. He served as our chief of police, served Pierce County as under sheriff. His wife is the current city manager for Crest. And more than his role, he was a dear friend, he was a leader, he put words to action, he did what he said, and he led this community in various ways, left a mark, and such a good man, good husband, good father. I had the distinct honor of being with him and his family just moments before he entered eternity on Saturday. And to be able to know a man like that and to see a family like that that's still serving our community is such a legacy. And Rob meant so much to people here on our team still here today, to this city. There's very few men like him, and so I want to extend my deepest sympathies to the Maskow family, to Dawn, to the kids. He left a mark and an imprint, and I'm just so grateful for his service and his leadership as a, just a fine public safety officer, but just even a finer man, and that is rare to find in these days. And so to have him be a part of our community for so many years was just a treasure. So my heart, my prayers, my thoughts continue to be with that family. It was just, it was an honor to be there on Saturday with them all. And I know that service information is forthcoming, but I also have talked with Councilmember Fleming and McCloskey about having special recognition of that, which I would love to do in his honor. So thank you. That is, with that, I will conclude my comments. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll start my comments by saying I agree we should do some form of special recognition. I think that'd be highly appropriate for his service to our city. So just a few things I wanted to talk about, most of which have already been covered to one degree or another. But the, I'll start with the playground and with the roundabout of 36 and Grandview. The point I want to bring up about both of those is that those were both basically initiated by citizen engagement. They didn't come down from, they didn't come from top down, they came from bottom up. And it was the efforts of just people in our community who are concerned or who saw a need and brought it forward, and we were able to make things happen in both cases very, I say very quickly, very quickly by government standards. But we have a now, you know, the All Abilities Playground, and we have this roundabout which is going to increase safety for our kids going to school at the junior high. And I just think those are amazing, and it's a tribute to the folks in our community who did that. So also at the Business Reception, and I just wanted to, only other thing I would add to that is, I would love to see more people come to those Home-Based Business Receptions or any Business Reception to come and network and just talk to each other and, you know, fly your flag as a business owner. It's amazing. It's get out there and enjoy, you know, talk about what you do. Because what you do for our community is amazing, and we all need to hear more of it. And the final thing I just want to touch on is the 911 Remembrance Ceremony. It was a wonderful ceremony, as people have pointed out. And if you happen to miss it, the park is still there. And it's a beautiful park, very symbolic, you know, with a piece of the World Trade Center there itself, the names of all of the firefighters and law enforcement who were killed there. And it's a very moving place, and you don't have to have an appointment or a ceremony to show up and just sit there and just contemplate. And my final comments on that are just, the fire chief brought up, he had some very appropriate comments on our state of national unity, or sometimes lack thereof, but I just wanted to take a moment to echo. The, you know, for those of you who remember, for, you know, right after the attack, the United States was as unified as it's ever been, and 24 years later, we are approaching the other end of the spectrum. We've seen violence in politics or about politics, and it's, and that's not who we are as a people, or it shouldn't be who we are as a people. I mean, we scabble, we fight, but we don't need to be violent. That's the whole point of having a democracy, is you can debate your ideas in a public forum, you know, vote on who you think is the better choice or what the better options are, and act accordingly. And I would just encourage all our citizens, some who are probably feeling very angry about recent events, some who are feeling angry about other events that were not quite so recent but still have happened, to take a pause, take a breath, and then let's talk about it in a public forum, and let's find a way forward together. That concludes my comments. Thank you. So that concludes council comments and reports, and we are now out of, moving into the study session portion of our meeting. Item number nine, UP Refuse Franchise Agreement Amendment. If Lisa Kotorik, our Administrative Services Director, could come join us, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for the introduction, and council, good evening. Wanted to discuss a little bit about the University Place Franchise Agreement. We have a franchise agreement in place for refuse services with University Place Refuse. They have been a franchisee since the start of the city. Their most recent franchise was provided by council in February 2021, and that current franchise runs through December of 2035. On Monday, August 4th, Michael Brunner, the Assistant General Manager of University Place Refuse, came forward and brought up an idea about potentially running a pilot program for 2026 that involves collection services outside of the normal collection services that are done on a weekly basis for residential customers of University Place Refuse. In order to move forward with a pilot program and what that might look like, the first step that must be done is an amendment to the franchise agreement. Currently, Section 20.2 of the franchise agreement is, calls out very specific collection events, namely the fall and spring cleanup and the fall and spring yard waste pickup. Those events are specifically mentioned in the franchise agreement and are held at very specific times of the year. In order to move forward with a potential pilot program, in whatever form that might look like, we need to modify that language to be a little bit more broad, to provide for expanded services in whichever form they may take. And so that is what we'll be talking about this evening. So in your memo, you can see Section Point, or Section 20.2 has been highlighted with the language modifications. You'll see that references to spring cleanups, fall cleanups, spring yard waste pickups, and fall yard waste pickups have been removed, and in its place, more generalized language that states, "The city and the company shall jointly design and implement additional collection events. These may include annual pickups or household drop-offs. At a minimum, such collection events shall provide the opportunity for customers at a frequency of no less than twice per year to dispose of refuse materials or yard waste materials at no additional charge." So that section has been drafted more broadly to provide for potential changes in those pickup opportunities in the future. Modifying the language now would allow for this pilot program to move forward without any further language changes that would require council action. If the pilot program is successful, then hopefully that would carry on and we wouldn't need to make no further adjustments to the franchise language. If folks aren't satisfied with that pilot program, you can always revert back to what residents have become accustomed to, with again, no further change needed to the franchise amendment language. So essentially, that's what we're proposing and what would be before council at the next council meeting. And with that, I would be happy to take any further questions on the language change.
Okay. Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I read the language that's highlighted here, but would you be really specific as to what's being requested? I mean, right now it just says no less than, but is the proposal, we're going to have more than just a fall and spring, and if so, when?
Yes.
And what would that look like?
And I can speak to more of the details of that. It hasn't been finalized yet, so we're still in conversations with UP Refuse about what that would look like. But the proposal on the table is to allow for some sort of voucher or credit program where residents that are customers of University Place Refuse could, at their own convenience, schedule a time or come to the University Place Refuse area to drop off refuse or yard waste at a time that's convenient for them. So you no longer would have to wait for those specific timeframes to take your refuse materials down to their station. Right now, they allow for drop offs in the spring and the fall. Usually it's two weeks in October, and if you live north of 40th Street, you can go one week and on a specific date. If you live south of 40th, you go the next week on a specific date. Sometimes that works out great for residents, but oftentimes, you know, schedules change and folks are cleaning their, cleaning out their residence or garages at different times of the year and may want more of that flexibility. So what is being proposed is folks could take advantage of that service whenever the refuse site is open. And right now, they're open Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then the first Saturday of the month, UP Refuse is open from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And so those would be the hours that a customer of University Place Refuse could come and drop their materials off.
Okay, so with that said, I'm trying to think of the benefit to the community.
It's big.
Hmm?
I'm sorry. Thinking out loud, I was saying, I think it's big, but my.
Yeah. I mean, at a blush, it sounds awesome because there's flexibility there for the community, but right now, we have spring and fall, and that's no charge to the public. Saturdays is a charge to the public. If we had it drop off anytime you want, does that eliminate that charge, like the Saturday when you drop off?
Yeah, so there's, there would be no charge for a drop off based on this new voucher system. So the proposal right now is a minimum of twice per year. At your flexibility, you could go in, drop off your materials on a date that works for you. I think another issue that was raised by Mr. Brunner was the need for traffic control on those specific days in May or October when they are holding the specific date for the drop off event. There is quite a line of traffic that heads into their facilities on that day, so that does require some traffic control. So that would, by providing for language that would be more flexible, it is hoped that under this pilot program, the need for that traffic mitigation would go away.
So the fall and spring cleanup dates would actually, would go away under this proposal?
Under the pilot program, yes.
Okay. And it says minimum, which, is there a maximum?
We don't have a maximum written in, and we do have language in there that does talk about the agreement between the city and the company. So I'm sure, you know, there's not going to be 50 drop offs that would, that would be provided for, but it would be reasonable to what customers are receiving now in terms of yard waste and refuse drop offs and pickups.
And would the Saturday drop off time still remain?
Yes.
Okay, so that citizens wouldn't have to take a time off from work to be able to drop stuff off?
Correct. The understanding and the discussions that have been had is whenever University Place Refuse is open, that's when you would be able to take your materials to the facility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Right, Councilmember McCloskey.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Protem. The only negative I see with all of this is that as a homeowner, you lose that sense of urgency to clean up your yard.
True.
Got to do it, got to do it. So, you know, what would be the outcome of that, you know? Hopefully they will use it twice a year. Could you do it like twice a year, like in the fall, or twice a year in the spring? As long as you do it twice, total in the whole year, you know what I'm saying?
Right, and details are still being determined, so more details to come. As soon as we have more information, we'll share that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to understand more about the pilot program. And then in, after one year, are they going to come back to the council for a review? Or is it, or, because I would be curious about how it all panned out. I think it'd be, I think it's going to be a win, but I'd like to hear how it went.
We can provide an update.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Boykin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you. I apologize, but I was a little excited about what I, from what I recall, with Mr. Brunner had been offering us in terms of why it was even a possibility of looking at some different options forward, as well as thinking about what it is that's being offered here, which is really being customer focused, really being sure about trying to make an expansive way to make it a more appealing opportunity for our residents and our citizens, and to connect very intentionally. I think there is even some benefits that come to UP Refuse based upon looking at a different model, and I'm sure that those things also could be reported back in terms of the impact that it could make. But I saw tremendous upside. I thought it was really thoughtful to put it before council, as had been part of the dialogue, and then given us an opportunity to begin a more formal consideration. And then lastly, just from my own understanding, when the language is absolutely clear, we'll still get the opportunity at that point to say yea or nay, and/or to make any recommendations to the language as it might be presented at that time. So I just wanted to affirm, I think it's really good on the surface and below the surface, based upon centering our citizens and our residents in terms of this suggestion. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Gracie.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm excited about this program. I just was, I was offering up a point of clarification, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but when Mr. Brunner presented last, he thought that this would also enhance their visibility and people to take advantage of Saturdays, because right now, I mean, I for one didn't realize they were open the first Saturday of every month, and so I think part of that too was, he was hoping that that would also create some buzz and business on that. Am I saying that right?
Yes, yes, yes. When they first opened Saturdays, those were very popular, and it's since waned, and we can work with them and promote that also. But yes, this would, would help as most folks would be able to clean out and drop off on a Saturday.
Yeah, I think it would bring some highlights. I know they're gracious to be open, so I want to make sure it's a good value for them. So thank you very much. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Okay, I have some comments, and Councilmember Fleming will follow me. But just real quick, first, I'm supportive of the idea too. In fact, I was busy cleaning my garage on Labor Day, and I had to pay for the privilege of dropping my trash off at Tacoma because, you know, so I would be very. So I would be very excited to have this voucher program there. And also, just as a reminder for folks, they're building those new apartments right next door that are going to have businesses in there. And every time they do a cleanup that's on a scheduled weekend, the lines extend all down the street, right in front of where those apartments are going to be. And I think once you add in several hundred more vehicles of people who just live there, the traffic of doing it the way they're doing it right now will become unsustainable or much more, at least much more difficult. So I think this voucher program is an excellent possible solution for that. And so I'm in favor and love to hear more about it when we get there. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you. You know, I wanted to add one more comment to, while I think this is a great movement in the right direction and certainly a win for the community. I just offer this for part of the dialogue that you're going to have with with Mike, and that is Saturdays when it's open, I think it's from 9:00 to 1:00 or 10:00 to 1:00. Keep in mind that people work during the week, so they're working Monday through Friday. They get home at 5:00 o'clock at night. And then we give them a couple of hours on a Saturday morning to gather up their stuff and then race to the dump to dump it. And that's probably why it's kind of lost the excitement that it had. It's just the window is just not enough time for people to load up what they're going to load up and take their. So people like myself and others end up going to Tacoma because they're open until 5:00 on Saturdays. Maybe take a look at those times, and if we're doing a pilot project, consider adjusting the times that they're open so it's more convenient for the customer and not for the business. As much as everyone here knows how much I'm in love with UP refuse, I think they could do a little better on the timing. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, saying none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item number 10, Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan Amendment with Jack Eckland, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and City Council. I'm Jack Eckland, Director of Public Works, and tonight I bring you to for study an amendment to the City's Park Recreation and Open Space Plan, also known as the PROS Plan. The City's PROS Plan provides a guide for development and management of the city's parks and open spaces. And then the PROS Plan was last updated in 2020, which included a very exhaustive of public outreach and development of, you know, priorities for various parks and what identifying our needs for the capital improvements of parks. In that last update, additional both for the Kobayashi Preserve and Adriana Hess Wetland Parks, the needs for both additional parking and trail improvement were identified as needed to support those two parks. Now, recently, opportunities have arisen to acquire properties adjacent to these parks that can accommodate many of those needs. But in order to take best advantage of these opportunities, I recommend you make the following amendments to the PROS Plan. It's relatively minor, but I do want to direct you in your council packet, you'll see a memo that summarizes the proposed amendments, as well as a draft resolution that would come back at a later date. So anyway, the first section would be in section six, on page 72 of the, under the Kobayashi Preserve Project Recommended Improvements. We would want to add the three bullets. One would be to acquire parcel 0220262017. It's the property immediately adjacent to Kobayashi to the south. Also identify that it'd be construct additional parking on that parcel, as well as construct additional trail improvements to and both to and within that parcel as well. On section six, page 76, the project recommended improvements for Adriana Wetland Park, this would be recommended to acquire parcel 9435000077, which is a parcel immediately to the north of Adriana Hess. And also on that would be to construct additional parking on that parcel, construct additional trail connections and amenities within and from this parcel as well. And the final amendment would be to amend the table located on pages 80 to 82, which labeled as the UP PROS CIP Project Cost Opinion Summary. And on that table would be essentially to add for those two parks, both the improvements we just mentioned, as well as the cost for those improvements. Now, with that, I would be happy to, we're currently scheduled to hold a public hearing for this amendment at our next council meeting for your consideration. But that with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Jack. I'm, I, as you know, am optimistic about this opportunity, and especially for the Kobayashi property. Just one, a point of clarification, and we've talked about additional parking and trail improvements and amenities. Has there been any discussion about improvements to the restrooms as a part of this plan?
On this, right now, we're not, we wouldn't be proposing any restroom improvements on either of those adjacent parcels. I think the existing, I might actually talk about, I don't know, I can look at if you want to have a, we can add that as an amendment just to cover it if we want to do future restroom improvements on those parcels.
Okay, I just think with parking and hands, you know, we, you know how loved that area is, and the parking has inhibited that a little bit. But I think especially down there with security concerns, with all ages, kids, and being being able to be down there, a lot of them get wet as well. I think that we should look at those restrooms just because they are quite dated. If there became an opportunity to enhance those and ADA accessibility as well, so.
Yeah. Excellent idea.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you. Jack, when you and I talked about these two projects, one, you'd identified the funding, as I recall, for the Adriana Hess portion. But you were working on the funding for the Kobayashi portion annex. Are you there with that and with no impact to the rest of the budget?
So right now, and we'll be, in the upcoming, I mean, we'll have that kind of spelled out, but we have identified funding sources for both of the acquisition portions. We're not, right now, proposing to do any of the other improvements associated under this current budget cycle. That would have to be at, you know, future dates. But the pressing opportunity now is the opportunity for the parcel acquisition. And so both of which would be partially funded with park impact fee funds, and then the other funding would be coming from some of the additional revenues that we've accrued through the city the last budget cycle. And we'll, that's the one-time monies that we talked about in, previously had been brought to council in one of Leslie's last finance reports.
The COVID funding, funding?
No, the, just basically the additional revenues that we had that go beyond, you know, we have fairly conservative forecasts, and so we had higher.
The N for.
And any fund balance stuff, yeah.
All right, okay, thank you. I want to make sure we got the cash if we're ready to do it.
Yep.
Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. Just to continue the expectation about prioritizing how we're walking through this, the most important thing, and I think in your last comments that you underscored, is the acquiring of property. And in doing so, we can then talk about the expectation of what those subsequent amenities could look like. I like the idea of what we may be able to do in terms of our imagination, but obviously, we've got monies that also are driving or undergirding our imagination. But to be clear, this is really about acquiring the properties in both parks. And then the expectation about amenities and improvements, is there something along the lines beyond the acquisition that makes you feel comfortable to talk about what the possible trail improvements, if you will, are? Because I'm clear about what what parking lot means.
Yeah, so in both parcels, it's a little different for each one. So at Adriana Hess, the adjacent development is that's the, that was referred to by Mayor Protam with the, in the last discussion, the developments going on in that former Willow Tree Gardens location. They are doing some, they're constructing some trail improvements around the wetland. And there will be some connections into our existing parks, but then this parcel will allow us to get, have improved connections between those two because it's right, basically it's the piece right in between that. And then also allow maybe some additional amenities, you know, maybe a picnic bench or some other kind of viewing area. So all those things are options. I built it into the plan amendment right now because that's, that deals with not only our next step, but also future steps, so we don't have to come back again to change it, you know, hopefully. But that's the general idea of why I've added those. At the, next to Kobayashi, this would be more of a, both a trail connection, connecting the new parking area and whatever amenities can be there, but also it's quite a large property. That parcel is about an acre and a half along, you know, along the creek. And so just it would be not only a trail to access parking, but also just extension of the trail system out there and be able to enjoy now the new property, you know, so we, hopefully we can acquire that. But so that has probably more extent, and I think the trail, the costs I have reflected for that trail is a little bit more, just because it's a bigger and more of an amenity than just a connection.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all I have, Mayor Protam.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McCloskey.
All right, thank you. The dollars won't be in the PROS Plan, though, right? It's just the, or will it?
There's a, there's an estimate in the probable cost of just, it's just a range of potential cost for those things.
If it goes over that, is, do you have to bring it back?
You don't necessarily have to revise it. You have to, unless it's way out of scale. But you have a general range of what you're going for is the, the ideal with that.
Right, yeah, and I understand that there's one parcel, there's a sense of urgency with that one, so we can acquire it for the additional amenities. And so I do get that and understand that, and it's very strategic, and the opportunity has, you know, opened itself up. So I'm open to that. And you also are going to go over, try to get RCO funding for it, too?
I think RCO then would be, we don't have that availability, we're out of, off cycle right now for any kind of grant funding for acquisition of the property. However, any amenities that could be done, that would be an opportunity. And then by having it in the PROS Plan, that allows the eligibility for some grants or similar to like RCO or some other things. So that's, that's why I have it listed here, and then we can possibly help offset the physical cost with that.
Yeah, once the, you know, there's the acquisition of the trail and the, this additional parcel with the parking going into Adriana Hess, are you coming back with the, with the revision to a master site plan for Hess, or is it going to be a separate master site plan?
So it'll be, so this is just a quick, so this one right here, this proposed action is a kind of a, it's a slight tweak to our existing PROS Plan. We're actually in the process of having a overall kind of overhaul update of the entire PROS Plan. With that, we will be updating the master site plans. And then these parcels will become basically this, if, you know, assuming we acquire them, they would then be part of the Adriana Hess Park or part of the Kobayashi Park. So that'll just reflect a much bigger park footprint in the, in the next update.
And when do you, when do you propose to go for the update?
That, we need to, so our current PROS Plan, it's good for six years, and so we need to have it updated by early next year. So it'll be soon, too, but.
2026.
But we need to do this amendment to position ourselves to acquire the property, too.
Okay, so you have some roll-up-the-sleeves work for our parks, don't we?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Let's keep them busy. The other question in regards to restrooms at Kobayashi, I would like to have a lot more detail, maybe bring that discussion back in a study session to understand the scope, the reasoning, the capacity, because restrooms are quite expensive. And to, part of that in the back of my mind is, once the dam is removed and the fish ladder is removed, there's the, the new bridge is in place, we're going to get endangered salmon species coming up and spawning in that area, and we cannot allow people to recreate in the waters because they will destroy the salmon habitat. It's already been destroyed, where we once had it restored. And there's invasive species, you know, there's a lot of things going on there. All of our educational signage is either vandalized or gone, and there isn't any signage about appropriate behavior when you're in a, next to a protected salmon-bearing creek, which is the life conservation's futures has, you know, provided us with this opportunity for the, just a gem and a beautiful place for our citizens and others to, to come and enjoy. And I would like to keep, it's never going to be pristine, but close to that as possible, maybe, and maybe, you know, enjoying the, the increase in the salmon that goes along in, along the corridors, you know, in the future. So with that crystal ball coming up, circling back, looking at the restrooms and looking at the active use that needs to switch back into passive use, would be a great discussion for the council members to, to have in a study session. And that could include maybe a updating to the restrooms there if needed, if warranted. I would like to see that. And then speaking of restrooms for the expansion of the Adriana Hess Trail into the new development for, I can't remember the development's name. Just slipped my mind.
At Willow?
At Willow Tree. But anyway, irregardless of the name, we know where it's located, we know what's coming up. So that's going to be a connection into Paradise Pond, Adriana Hess. And so we will need to look at, what does that look like? Do we need a restroom there? Because we're going to have expanded use, time, and there's a bird sanctuary and habitat there. How is that all going to be used with the partnership to the nature center that is currently there and taking care of that property for us? So a lot of sensitive areas in use for those particular projects that I'm keen on understanding and getting a grasp on so that we can have the appropriate behavior. My last comment in regards to the expansion of the trail system into Adriana Hess is, unfortunately, about our, our family dogs. You know, they're precious and lovely, but there are places that they may not come. And as we go into our national forests and other sensitive areas, you know, dogs are prohibited to come for, for reasons. Part of it is the enjoyment, part of it is to protect the environment and its, and its, and the habitats and in the sanctuary for the, for the wildlife that we want to protect in these corridors. So I'd like to have, I know it's a lot, but it's really important that we have all this in place beforehand, before we start to develop and design so we can design it to the function and best use of each of the intentions of both of these, these properties. Thank you.
Sure. Let me address a couple things that maybe might be able to kind of address both of the concerns. So some of these things, maybe we will address with this current quick amendment, but then some maybe we forward on to the consultant to make sure it's considered with the overall one. So.
Yeah, it's two-pronged. I didn't mean to confuse and conflict what's on the table.
And I wanted to, with these, these specific, this amendment, I didn't want to subvert the previous public outreach and, and the identified needs. And so these were specifically limited to the needs identified previously. So one thing on the Adriana Hess, so Adriana Hess did have the identify a need for additional restroom.
Okay.
And so I think that would be appropriate to then, because it was identified as a need, it just wasn't identified as a capital expense, to still list it as a potential capital project. Just it doesn't commit us to anything.
That's fine, there isn't a public restroom there unless you knock on. There isn't a public restroom there unless you knock on the.
That's the only one, yeah. That's identified.
The door and ask to come, come in and their, their hours may be not conducive to, to the urgent need at the time.
So I think I could, using that, we could add that in this amendment at Adriana Hess.
Okay.
At Kobayashi, it's, we may actually already be there, other than your comments of what additional things we need to want to consider. The recommended improvements already talk about adding more interpretive signage down there, so that's consistent with what you've asked. Also talk about stream and riparian edge restoration, so that's in there as well. So both of those things are already programmed. Well, obviously they'd want to still, it'll be reevaluated and stuff. And then they don't necessarily have an additional restroom, but they do have noted an additional wash sta-, wash station. I'm not 100% sure what that is, but it sounds close. But so.
But if you're British, you're close.
You got a shower too.
But it may be appropriate then, maybe I, for this one, for Kobayashi, we don't add anything, but we direct our, our consultant when we do the overall update that that's something we want them to specifically also look at in their recommendations. And then, and then we don't, we don't come afoul of what the previous kind of needs were identified. Does that make sense?
Yes. Can I speak to, I don't want to speak out of turn. My, and I, and I, in light of what Councilmember McCloskey did say about the possible changes to what we would allow folks to use the stream for and things, one, I would be really, I'm, I'm very interested in what that possibility looks like because that, to me, it seems like a significant change in how our residents use that area.
Yeah, and also downstream would be, with the boarding too, be gone.
So I think, I mean, again, we don't have a crystal ball, but in, in vision with that, if there is going to be change that we do have to take to prohibit how we are using that space, you know, that would change my mind as far as the restroom need for that area. However, I do want to say that I am, this is the first that I'm hearing of a possible change to how we are able to use that property for families, for kids, for, you know. So I would really like to see that be brought back as far as a discussion, how that needs to be addressed down the line and what timeline we're looking for that and how we really would manage that and what the needs are that would require us to take such a, a change.
Certainly, I think to be responsive to Councilmember McCloskey, I'll make sure that we have our consultant, when they're doing all their work for the update, that that's something they're going to have considered in their outreach. But I do know, so right now they're still in the public outreach step of, of the update. So they haven't provided the park commission with any recommendations. This, once again, we're talking about two different things. I'm getting outside a little scope of what we're doing at half. But that one, I think, you know, that's not something the park commission has even considered at this point. And so we're getting a little bit of the cart ahead of the horse, but at the same time, I'll, I'll make sure that, based on your comments, that that's something they are considering.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And where you done, Councilmember McCloskey?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to close that loop because again, that was the first time I'm hearing of it. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jack, likewise, this kind of caught me a little bit by surprise, but when I think about Chambers Creek, it's owned by three different entities. It's owned by Lakewood, Pierce County, and UP. Who owns the creek?
So the creek itself, technically, the, the ownership of it goes from the, the middle of the creek. Though what can be regulated in the creek, however, is typically driven by fish and wildlife. And so, so although we technically own it, we don't have as much say in it. So like restricting fishing or other things is, we don't have as much authority on that sort of thing. It's typically driven by fish and wildlife, but, you know, it's something, we certainly can ask a question with fish and wildlife, what kind of things can or can't be restricted or should or shouldn't be. You know, that's, they know more than me on that, so I, I don't want to speculate.
What part does the county own?
What's that?
What part does the county own?
With respect to Kobayashi, they don't own anything because it's between, so with Kobayashi, it's either UP or Lakewood. They own immediately to the, what direction is that? West-ish of Kobayashi. So that's where the county, and then they, at that point, they, well, they split it with Lakewood for a period of time, and then they have both sides for a period of time.
Okay. And when we get down to the bridge, who, we own the bridge, is that right?
And we get back to the bridge, we, we own the right-of-way portion of the, a half of the bridge. Yeah, we own half of the little bridge, but just in the right-of-way. So the county owns the land outside the right-of-way on both sides of the creek at that point. But then at the right-of-way, we have half of the little binky bridge and they have half of it. The county.
Okay. So I, I guess my point I'm trying to get to is before we can get into any kind of regulatory process on, on the creek, we've got a lot of hoops to jump with.
Yeah.
The county, fish and wildlife, and, and others.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yes. I'm impressed you could talk about that, but so, but of the subject we're talking about right now, which is strictly amending the pros plan.
Yes.
The acquisition of property of possibility.
Yes.
Yeah, forget it.
Right, yeah. What is our way ahead going forward after today? Assuming you've got a head nod from the group.
So we'll bring back the public hearing schedule for the next council meeting. We also then are in discussions with the property owners, and so we hope to have agreements. It would be our goal, either, hopefully maybe at the next meeting, but in the near future, basically back to council. So.
Okay.
That's the goal.
All right. So I'll just offer my head nod as I support these recommended changes to the pros plan as, so, as brief so far. Do you need anything else from council before you go ahead?
I don't think so. I think I, I'm tracking pretty well where you guys are.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a final comment. We, we can't do anything forward without first affirming the modifications that you're asking for tonight.
Yes.
Is that fair to say?
Especially to use either park impacting money for acquisition or future grant stuff. So that's what this does for us.
Okay. Thank you so much for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay. And actually, that brings one more question to my mind. I'm sorry, it's, I got a park impact fee, general fund, refresh, Mr. Murphy, what's RCO again?
Well, RCO is a grant. Recreation Conservation Office.
Thank you.
That would only be.
For future improvements.
Not, not acquisition, but possibly amenities, that sort of thing.
Understood.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember McCloskey, you have one more comment?
Yeah, one more comment, and I would like to thank our Mayor Protem for the allowance to expand the conversation beyond the topic at hand. I think it was very important and, and also enlightening, especially with the, with these placements of the partial, parcels on, on the pros plan. And I, I'm very grateful that you allowed that because you really didn't have to, because they were, outside of Robert, rules of order.
I know. I thought about that for a minute, but honestly, it was a good discussion and, and that's the purpose of acquiring the parcels, is to actually do something with them at some point in the future. So, got it. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Our last subject for today, our item number 11 is the arts commission, staff study results. And we have Matt Kaser, city attorney, and Jack Eklund, public works director.
And thank you again, Mayor Protem. As you said, I'm Jack Eklund, director of public works, and with me is city attorney Matt Kaser.
You never hooked the last guy.
So tonight we are bringing to you a study, for study information on options to establish an art commission in University Place. Now, in your council packet, you're going to find a few things that'll be of interest. One, you have a memo that summarizes some of the, you know, findings and the options that we saw. We also have a copy of our code. It's chapter 130, 1.35 of our code that basically refers to our own advisory commissions. So it kind of gives us a baseline for that. And then finally, there's two, both, two memorandum of agreements that we'll refer to a bit, that were some past agreements we had with the independent art group of Up for Art to function in similar fashion as, is to some extent. And so basically, where it comes down to, the easy, the quick answer is that you have two options of, of things to do. Now, they have different, you know, options within them, but you either, to do an art commission, you could look at an independent advisory group, and that would be consist, something similar to what we had done in the past with Up for Art. Or you look at a traditional commission model. When you look at the independent advisory group, so some of the pros is, you know, the independent group will, can work independently more so. They do require little staff support, and they also have a little bit more options in their financing and how they fundraise or, or do different things. Now, there's also being an independent group, I suppose their financing is not 100% focused on art commission, it'd be whatever their, you know, full mission is. Now, the cons for this, there would be less council control or input. Typically, we had, when we looked at that previous memorandum of agreements, there was a general plan identified by the city council or a general guidance, but overall that independent group worked on their own. Then it would bring something forward to council as compared to council directing that group to do something and then come back. And then the other thing, other con with an independent group is there's, it's less secure of a long-term viability, meaning, you know, as a commission, the city council dictates if members are being active, you know, you do call it out for membership, you, you know, keep a commission staff as compared to, there's just little control over from the council on how an independent group would, would act, and that they are dependent on their financing and so forth to be viable. So in that previous MOA, as I mentioned, essentially the, and if we did this model, likely you would have to go out for a, you know, RFQ or something, RFA, something like that.
Request for something.
Yeah. To some, to art group organizations to see if anyone's interested. You'd have guidance for what the expectation from the city is, and then you would basically execute something very similar to what we already have in place with, with those memorandums in the, in the council packet. So I won't go over all the details of that, but I don't know. On this one, do you have anything to add on the, this one?
You know, one of the issues when we were taking a look at this was, as you know, there's both the original MOA in and there's a supplement in there. One of the questions that actually kind of perplexed us is, are these still technically in effect? And there seems to be a wide range of opinions in house, whether they're still in effect. But what's undisputed is nobody's, neither us nor Up for Arts seems to have really abided by the agreements, even if they were in effect for a number of years. So if you were to go down this particular path, it would probably behoove the city to start fresh, you know, to use footballs or the new, fresh set of downs. You do have some templates that we've used in the past, at least a working model. And then Jackson, I contrast it here in a second with the commission model. One thing just to bear in mind, not to steal Jack's thunder on this, is as you're going through this, the two questions I would just kind of urge council to think about is, what is it you want in arts commission? What is it that you look at as your end game? And the degree of control, which Jack has hit on a little bit. So with that.
Could you move your mic just a little bit closer next to me? Thank you.
All right. So now we, we're going to look at, you know, traditional commission model. So that one, the pros is, it follows our, you know, familiar process that we're with our other commissions. So we're, we, we generally notice how that goes, although there are some, I'll talk a little bit, some of the examples of other communities, so there may be some tweaks to that. You do have more direct council direction and input with the commissions, and you do have a, basically you're able to ensure longevity by, you know, making sure the membership continues on a, on a commission. The cons is you do, it would take additional staff report, staff support in, in managing the commission, or supporting the commission at least. The funding limitations, it basically is more traditional, you know, city financing, city budgets, just like we would with any of our other commissions. And then this is interesting because it's kind of a, both a plus and a minus, it's not independent, right? So you have the council direction and, and authority, which is, is a good thing, but then also sometimes you have a little bit more, at least in the past, sometimes you get a little bit more energy or agency from a group that's independent and kind of focusing not only on the mission of the city, but also their own mission kind of thing. So that, kind of, both of them, neither of these two models are, none of the cons are horrible, right, for either one. It just depends on what the preference is from council. Now, kind of looking at what we have for examples of other traditional commissions out there, now each of these, now a lot of them have similar overall missions, right, to guide, provide guidance on overall art in the, in the, to the city councils of the respective cities. But they each have varying membership requirements and authorities granted to them. With Tacoma, I believe Tacoma's arts commission is, I think, the oldest art commission actually in the state. It's a, it's pretty well established. It's a, it's an art commission that has 15 members. It's, unlike most of art commissions, they're actually, the members are appointed or recommended through their economic development committee, not city council. They do have specific requirements where they, they need, they require at least one of the members to be a active professional artist. They also have a requirement for one of the members to be in the public education community. And then they also have a minimum of four members have to have professional experience related to art. So whether they're an art historian or an archaeologist, I mean, architect, architect or some sort of art-related field. And then they have, then the remaining members would be just art at-large, generally, community members. Now, as I mentioned, they do, do the same things as like all of them, about advising city council, but some of the authority that Tacoma has, which their commission of the ones we've seen probably has the largest, are the most independent of these commissions, and also have the most authority that we've seen. They do have the authority to establish certain policies in the, for the art, for the city. Also, they provide, one of their roles is they provide technical assistance to local artists. So that's a service that the Tacoma Art Commission provides. They also are required to give out annual awards to art projects throughout the, like, they have a certain, I can't remember what the name of it is, but they give out an award program to recognize artists. And they also have some limited contract authority where they can manage contracts with local artists for different purposes. The next one, kind of, these are a little bit listed in, kind of, degree of authority. Puyallup has seven members, so a little bit more, kind of more of the format that we've had for commissions. They have, the only requirements they have essentially is they have a, for membership, you need to have a supermajority of Puyallup residents. And if you are not a Puyallup resident, you have to have, bring some sort of art skill to the table, so to speak. So that's, so they do have that in there for some sort of artist, but only if you're a non, non-resident, although I assume they probably would give preference to artists and so forth. Now, the one element that they have authority that some of, like, our folks maybe may not, they do have a, a role where they can facilitate donations, grants, and other support for art and culture in the, in the community. So, you know, so if they're giving grants in, or, I mean, donations in, or if the city's providing like art grants to different community organizations, that's the type of thing that the art commission in Puyallup does. Now, shifting to Lakewood, so Lakewood has currently 15 members, although I think they have its minimum of seven, they have arranged that, right, Matt? Now, their authority that they have is very similar to what we do for our commissions, where they're essentially whatever authority council directs them to do, right? So it's very similar to what we have. However, they do have, similar to Tacoma, those specific requirements for membership. So, and they do have 15 members currently. They do require one member to be a working artist. Unlike Tacoma, they do require one member to be in the education field. And then they also have, they have, what is different, they, they have a requirement for at least one member to be in an active Lakewood community organization, or a community organization of some sort, you know, so let's say Rotary or something like that. But in general, the Lakewood, the nuts and bolts of it, other than membership, would be very similar to what our commissions already do, advisory role based on the directions. And then, then I just put us up here because if you just follow, let's say, what we do for park commission or public safety commission, you know, it's, we don't have specific requirements for, you know, who is, any qualification. for, you know, who is, any qualifications to be on a certain one, other than, I think, interest. We have a, in all of our commissions, our seven members, and, and they are purely advisory, so based on the direction. One of the things to point out in our language is we have, in our language, it's on the first page of the memo, is, you know, "Commissions may not take independent action representing the city with other agencies or bodies, and do not direct duplicate work of the city's administration." So where some of these others, especially in Tacoma, they do specifically go out to other agencies and other community things to have more of an independent body. But anyway, that's the, those are the variations of what we're seeing out there.
Okay, Jack, before you move on real quick, we had a question from Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jack, I actually have three quick questions or comments. One is in our current commissions, although we don't specifically say you have to meet this requirement, it's pretty well understood that we're looking for preferences of people with experiences or subject matter experts for those commissions. So I don't want to lose that in translation here in the conversation. The second question, the second which is a question, and that is, could we not develop a hybrid model of, like Tacoma and Lakewood, of what they're having, so that we have a commission that really focused on the community, has input from the community, has subject matter experts from the community, but the council still maintains some semblance of control? And I'm concerned about that piece for multiple reasons, when we look at our, all our commissions across the board. And lastly, when you put up the cons there for, of an independent commission versus one that's more along the lines of what we currently have, I was sitting there thinking, well, if those are cons, that's the same for all our commissions that we have.
On the commission itself, on this one?
Yeah. I mean, they, you know, our current commissions does require additional staff, and to me, part of our roles and responsibilities, if I, if you put on a staff hat, is to support those initiatives of the council, and the commissions are initiatives of the council. So I don't see that as a con, I see that as a duty and responsibility. And, and I don't think this is implied, nor was it inferred, but, you know, if someone thought supporting the council initiative as being a con, I would have concerns, just FYI on that one. You know, and then as far as funding limitations and not independent, you know, we give our commissions a tremendous amount of latitude to run with their ideas and their, things that they think are important, based on the guidance that the council has, or based on requests that council has. So I don't see that necessarily as negatives, but as a positive, because we're, it's a team sport, we're all in this together. And so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to portray setting up an arts commission as, boy, if we don't give them total autonomy and they have their total independence to go do what they want to do, then that's a con for the city, because I just don't see it that way. You know, I do want, you know, like any of our commissioners, I'd like them to be able to apply their independent thinking and their best guess at what's best for our community, and I believe all of them do that. I would love for our arts commission to do the same thing as we move forward. I know in the past, I don't know if it was Matt who said it earlier, you know, the, the system we had in place just didn't work, because we gave that autonomy, and then it faded away over time, and to this day, no one really knows who's on first anymore. And we have in the past given funding, even when we had an independent commission. I mean, the city gave funding to support some of those programs. So I think about a hybrid, where, you know, you have that latitude to be creative and get those creative juices going, and bring forward projects that benefit our city. I think the city can be partnership, and some of those go-out-to-the-public-and-ask-type things that they have, but I think there'll be times when the council may say, you know what, this project is so important to, to the city, that we'll be willing to put that in the budget and figure out how to make it work. I don't want to tie our hands, is where I'm going with this. I want to keep the hands of the council fluid and allow them the flexibility to be able to help guide the process and not be on the outside looking in. That's my thoughts for what it's worth.
Thank you, councilmember. And Councilmember Brogan, you had a question or comment as well?
I did, just a question, Mayor Protem. Jack, I want to ask you about Tacoma's model, particularly the economic development component. Can you comment on any benefit that you've seen to that, or any intentionality about why there seems to be almost an extricably linked relationship between economic development as it stood up in the city of Tacoma relative to their arts commission being the oldest? Is there something that is telling for you as you had a chance to compare these different models?
I'm not, you know, I think, from what I could tell, I think it's just a recognition that art goes hand-in-hand with economic development of the city, and the vitality of your downtown district is enhanced with art. And so I think Tacoma wanted to recognize that, but they are unique. I haven't seen any, the other agencies, it's the city council that appoints that, so.
Very good. I wanted that to be distinguished, because I think that's a different sort of consideration. And if we're really looking at it being a binary scenario of, do we want to have more autonomy or less autonomy as we consider the models? If there's something else that might be intriguing, that is in the model comparison, that might be it, because I too was more than curious about how the economic development intentionality has been feathered out, but it's been longstanding. And when I hear other things you pointed out, like, there is some contract responsibility that happens, policy opportunity within, side of that commission inside the city of Tacoma, there are some things that they absolutely apparently see or have a vision for. And I'm just wondering, is that a consideration that this council wants to consider as we talk about the possibilities of looking at art and its impact in City University Place as we move forward? So that was my question, and the things I just want to make sure that I made transparent in our dialogue. Thanks, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I don't have too much yet, but this is my last slide, which isn't very exciting, but basically, it goes back to, those are your two options. So, you know, I think if we did the independent advisory group, I don't think we need to, you know, reinvent the wheel too much. You do have that, those agreements in place, you do, there is extra work that would need to be done to create that art plan. There was one in 2011, or whatever it was, when they last done it. So there was a specific plan that was asked for that group to help manage. So that would be an action that would have to be taken in addition. The traditional commission, I put in here, you know, I think the base would still be our UP model, but then speaking to Councilmember Fleming's point, I think there's a wide variety to kind of pick and choose what's best about each of these other ones out there. That's the beauty about starting, right? You can, if you like what Lakewood's doing for something, and Tacoma's doing for something, you know, we can pick and choose of whatever sounds good. I, myself, I do like, and I didn't want to infer that, you know, because we don't have specific requirements on our commissions that they are, you know, unqualified or something like that, but I, I did like the, the criteria of at least having the, trying to get someone that's a working artist that's on a commission, just because that brings a perspective that can, community members at large, probably a little different perspective. So I do like that, that both Tacoma and Lakewood have. It's interesting that both of them also have someone from the education, you know, the school district, or someone that works in that, just because I think both of them, in their mission, talk about that connection too, between school and the youth and art in the community. So I like both of those, but ultimately, I don't know that either matter, I have very strong preferences one way or the other. I think either model is a win for the city. I think it really is up to council how much, how much you want to keep the pulse on, on what's going on and be involved with it, I think is really the main difference between the two. And then if you go to the commission ourselves, just, you know, tweaking the, the best of what's out there.
Okay. So thank you. And I'm going to take the liberty and go first this time, and then I'll be followed by Councilmember McCluskey.
I have Gracie, too.
Right, and then Councilmember Gracie after that. So I appreciate what you put together here, and I'm going to say, I was, honestly, I was hoping for a little bit more, something a little bit more definitive, because a lot of this stuff you've talked about, maybe not to the level of detail, was stuff that was brought out in the original proposal. We talked about what we used to do, we talked about what other cities were doing. And I was really hoping for a more solid recommendation, one way or the other, perhaps with the cost or, or cost range associated with it, you know, because you mentioned cons and pros and stuff like that, but one of the key considerations, I think, for the council is going to be, if we institute an arts commission, are we going to incur a cost to the city budget that's unanticipated at this point, beyond what we'd normally do for a commission? And I think that was one of the key factors I was, I was hoping to get out of this, so we could make a decision based not just on arts, which is awesome, and I propose this, I love the idea, but also just an understanding of what it would, what the cost of the city would be. And so I guess I was hoping for a little bit more, and what I would like to see coming forward is a more, what recommendation is the city staff best prepared to support? And, you know, personally, I'm, if you had to ask me today, I'd prefer on a traditional commission model with the ability to partner with outside organizations, something like the hybrid that Councilmember Fleming just brought up. So I think this is a good start, and I'm glad to see that we're actually making progress on it, but I think we, at least I need a little bit more to take, you know, understand what the next step is, how do we get there, you know, and what the city, particularly what the city staff recommends our next step be. Because right now, you're just kind of throwing it out there and say, "Council, tell us, what do you want?", which is what we did already eight months ago. And so I'm kind of wondering if we could get something just a little bit more, and maybe that's just my thoughts, I'd love to hear what my fellow councilmembers think. But, so that concludes my comment for now. Thank you, and Councilmember McCluskey.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, I'm excited that it's coming finally back around for this discussion. As everyone knows, I love art in all forms and styles and medias, from temporary to permanent, to large acquisitions. It does enhance the public space, the community engagement and the enjoyment around the undercity as, as does temporary art. That brings in the grassroots artists that may not be artists, but they are creative. So it's, because of such the broad-based visioning, I'm, I am leaning towards the commission model, one for sustainability, the other one is so that we could, as a, as a council and a city, set exactly what, what we want every year. It comes back to council, and we discuss, and design, is it chalk art, is it edible art, is it traditional art, is it music, you know? Because we were, we had a very rich music venue, especially in the, the summer, the summer, and how does, how would that augment our, our festivals and our movie in the park, all those things. This is going to be a very active commission, a commission that is not all about just setting policy recommendations for the council, but a action-oriented commission as well. So it will be a little different than the usual commission model, which means it might be a little more staff-intensive, maybe a little more council-intensive at times, too. I'm not sure. So I would like to know that aspect and that piece of it, because we're talking about pop-up art, we're talking about mural art, doing contests, a poet laureate, and art awards within the city to encourage and grow, all sorts of what art is. You know, it's, there's a plethora of things out there, so very broad-based, open-minded things, but the bottom line is our community values and what it brings to our community for joy, excitement, and augmentation of beauty and spontaneous, spontaneous projects of temporary and permanent basis within, within our city. So, you know, I know that's a lot. It's not, it's not just a, it's a big iceberg. So we have the tip of the iceberg right now, and I, my concern is that our city cannot sustain the funding mechanism for that. So we have to create something, and a partnership with a art nonprofit that has the ability to expand the funding of these projects, would create a wealth of diversity and opportunities within that. So this, I am a proponent of establishing an art commission for sustainability, and also to demonstrate that University Place supports the arts, as we do our parks, as we do economic development, but also to have the funding piece to that, so we're not always going back into the general fund, you know, as we have done with our festivals and our other, other events, so that we're, we're working smarter, and we're leveraging our, our funds for the, at the end, for, for the greater good of that. Because when you're talking about bringing artists in, especially the higher-end artists, they're, they're expensive, you know, they, the, as, as we know. And also, if we have a way to be able to gather funds, there'll, there'll be more opportunities to partner with other entities, other artists in the community, and also other jurisdictions as well for that. But I want us to keep a healthy economic fund going forward with this, with limited impact on, on that, because we're trying to pay down our long-term debt, and there's those critical links of those years that we, we need to look at. And each budget cycle, depending on the health of our economic status, we can always provide a funding piece for the, the art commission, after we approve their, their work plan for, for their projects. And we also know that there's also in-kind services that the, our staff, because they're so passionate and, and they want to support their, the residents, will, will have to look at as well and make best guessments as we figure out how to, what their work plans is in, in moving forward. So it's the visioning of, of what we're doing with that hybrid, but my interest in, I'm on the Up for Art Board, they're still in the storming stage right now. They haven't figured out the funding mechanism to, for sustainability, but my main interest is that they're the nonprofit that can bring that funding arm to bring strength, strengths to the, to the UP commission, if we so develop and design that, so that we'll have a, I know Matt is looking, a separate, but strategic partnership in some of the projects. So if UP for Art is interested in some project, they might be able to help support it, and maybe go after grants and for sustainability, because without the funding, we can talk about our, all we want, we can have wonderful, grandiose ideas, but we must have some of these things come into fruition. It has to be tactical and has to be realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gracie?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The irony of trying to pigeonhole art, and define it into a, I mean, that it's just, I think it's, it's ironic, you know? I graduated from art school, so I also, I see the irony in that, but I am excited about this possibility. I, too, like Councilmember Fleming, lean towards a more of a hybrid-type model, mostly for the sustainability factor that Councilmember McCluskey spoke, Councilmember McCluskey spoke to. As far as funding, I agree that I don't want to have any impacts to our, our general fund, but I do- But I do believe that that may be some hybrid model that could come along and help with a financial stability piece of it would be of interest, whether they have already a mechanism, a strong fundraising arm, something like that. I do think it, we have a lot of excited citizens that could be a part of this commission if we do more of a traditional model. I love the focus on having a connection to an education system, an educator. I also like the idea, and I know this wasn't brought up, and maybe this is also a question, in any of the things that you studied, was there any youth on any of these commissions, a student?
Not specifically called out. So each of them did have a certain amount of at-large position, so I don't know if they have any, but it's a potential. Now, that would be an option that, you know, the city council could decide that's something that we could do. I know in the past, it, the only challenge, you don't have to do it in conjunction with the school district. I know for years, we used to have a youth member on our park commission. But the challenge is when we were advertising it independently ourselves, you would get some that maybe were quite interested and energetic and participating. And then others that then it kind of fades out, especially as they get older or, and not. So if we were to do, because I've been thinking about this with respect to the park commission, if we ever wanted to envisage that again, I think the only way that works is if we somehow partner with the school district where they kind of help select, designate that, maybe with like their leadership group or something like that.
Because-
Because they've expressed interest that way. But that could be a way to have someone that, that's then, each year, you have someone new, and it keeps it fresh and so forth.
Because you're concerned that a student would get excited, apply, and then they don't fall, is that the question? Or could we just not have-
In the past, we'd have it, and then they eventually kind of just quit coming. And then we try to get new ones, and sometimes it's hard to get an interest for it.
I would, I mean-
So I think without that school link, it's, that's just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, I would argue that, you know, we want to make it attractive enough for them to be, and give them a voice where they feel heard, where they want to stay a part of it, you know, and stick to it. And I think there's great students out there that could, that have the tenacity, if they apply and they go through the process like every other adult that applies, could be a great option to have a student. I don't, I don't know if you want to limit it just to a school district when we have private schools and school, you know, different students that are a part of our community from all, all different schools. But I do think, I know, we're getting into the weeds, but the point of my question was if this could be a potential spot, I didn't know if there was a, you know, legal prohibit that at all.
Yeah, there's no legal prohibition. Jack touched on it a moment ago, and this kind of popped up in some of the course of the discussions earlier. Our code actually call, does call out for certain membership demographics associated with all four of our, with all of our commissions. Has a general rule, they have to be residents of the city unless there's, there's a couple exceptions in there. Specific to the Parks Advisory Commission, and this is the example that talked about, Jack talked about a second ago, the way our code reads, it should include one member from the city's youth population if feasible.
Okay.
So I don't see a problem if you wanted to apply same or similar language to an arts commission. The one consideration I might throw at you, though, along those lines is whether it would behoove council to adjust the term of the youth member.
Mm-hmm.
You know, traditionally, they're four-year terms. You know, if it's a youth member, do you want something less than four?
Yeah, and I'm open to, you know, what if it's just open to seniors, or if it's just open junior and senior, or something like, in high school. But I think this would be a great opportunity, is my basic point, to get students involved.
And I certainly don't have an issue with, you know, maybe engaging all of our high schools. And even Tacoma schools, if you have residents, that I'd go that. But the challenge is when we have the youth and then we'd go out for our reach-out and try to get it, we had, you know, years of then no one even interested in doing it. So that's a challenge, that's why I, and that's just my thoughts, is that I think we need to reach out and do some sort of partnership with the school districts and private schools and public, both, to see if we can get not only, you know, the engagement and also find the kids that are more, you know, they may be more apt to be interested if it's something that's also, you know, associated, or at least information provided from the school district. That's my thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, yeah, I just, I would love to see that. I think Tacoma School of the Arts is a great, you know, option, a resource for other things. So anyways, that, that is that. And then I think that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to dovetail on this conversation, because, Jack, I sense your concern. I do recall when we had in our commissions a requirement, I know what the language says, but the council said required, to have youth engagement. In the beginning, we had a lot of involvement, and then graduation comes along, you start thinking about, where am I going to go for college? The youth participation dropped off, and then it just never came back. And so I get, I get the concern, I get the enthusiasm. And I think that there's, again, in the middle, there's an opportunity there, maybe shorten the term of the commissioner, maybe to a one-year or two-year, depending on whether they're a junior or senior in high school or whatever. But, you know, it's worth revisiting, but maybe we could tie some caveats in there to maybe safeguard that so that we can maintain that opportunity for youth engagement. I think we should always foster that when we're talking about, especially in art and other areas in our community. But, you know, I, too, would be a little concerned if we, you know, had a requirement and then couldn't fill it. But I think we should make it a priority. I agree with that. I get both sides of this going, having done on both sides of it, so. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Boykin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm just curious about the options. The commission, traditional model, does it provide an opportunity for the vision of a hybrid model that has been talked around for dialogue tonight? Or is it really binary? It's commission in the traditional sense, or we're looking at an RFP, RFQ, RFI, that gives an opportunity for the capacity of a sponsorship, whether it's fiscal-driven or what have you?
Yeah, we might need more clarification from council on that. And there's a couple of notes I've had for other clarifications. But the original, my, and maybe I misunderstood, the Councilmember Fleming, when you brought up hybrid, my understanding, it was more in context of what some of the other agencies are doing, not necessarily just do ours or do that and doing that. I don't know. And then it sounds like Councilmember McCluskey, you were talking about maybe doing a hybrid, between both a traditional commission, whatever form that is, plus having, you know, engaging with an outside group.
That augments the-
Yeah, and the only, so like Tacoma does that, and that's a little bit with that contracting authority, that they do have some ability, their commission, to then, they do an RFQ or whatever themselves and coordinate with another group. So anyway, I guess-
That would be the city that's actually leading in that capacity, independent of the actual quote-unquote commission?
Basically, they would be reaching out. You know, you could, so that's a little challenging, what the hybrid would be. I, I think, anyway, so the original understanding that I had from Councilmember Fleming, I understood it more of how you would basically do a hybrid of the different, what the different agencies are doing. But, so I guess it just depends on, it would be how you do, how would our commission engage with a volunteer, you know, another outside group, other than, I guess, just through RFQs, RFPs type of thing?
Councilmember McCluskey.
Okay. So I'm going to do a what-if.
Okay.
This will help. So we design a, the traditional commission model in University Place. We, we already have a city partner in some, something, we'll call it Up for Art right now. They are sustainable and viable for the next few years. The art commission comes up with this idea. We want to have an art festival of all these different styles of art. We want to have a call for artists to pull all this together. So the Up for Art, you know, they'll get invited to the commission, they'll present their idea, Up for Art will go back, will discuss, and the board likes the idea. So they will, they will go for the call for artists, pull, pull different, pull from whatever they do to get the artists to come, to create an idea, kind of, and then bring it back to the art commission, says, here's what we got, what do you think? And further discussion takes place. But the, so the work is transitioned to the lane of Up for Art, which is their lane, and also the, their lane of fundraising to help make this event transpire with obviously some help and financial assistance or whatever they may need from University Place. So if it's a big, huge festival, then, you know, that's a lot of money. But if it's something small, like something on Market Square, you know, the outlay of money is not so, so large. So they will, they will come in and partner with the city for, to, to get that venue up and running, because the art commission can only do so much. You know, that's, that really level of activity is not really in my perspective their lane. But it will help augment the art commission's vision, ideas, and action, action-oriented plan that the council has already approved going into that year. And Up for Art could come back and say, no, we're not interested. And then we'll have to figure out a different pathway forward to get whatever work plan needs to come to fruition.
Yeah, I guess, I've seen in some of the other groups, they do talk about their art commission does reach out to community groups. So I guess from that, that extent, they would still, could do that. Any other community group that would be pertinent, I guess, I guess I kind of think to myself of, you know, kind of almost our current relationship with, say, the UP Historical Society, where they have stuff on historical stuff, like they came to the city council about the park naming type of thing, right? And then also related to the park commission. You could do something similar to that, I suppose. It's, I don't know, Matt, what's your thought on that?
No, I have a number of thoughts.
That you do? I'm trying to be really careful.
Yeah, and I'm also mindful.
It was in theory.
Yeah, yeah. So there's a couple of considerations that are going through my head as I'm listening to the hypothetical, and none of which have easy answers. So let me start with the questions I've got as I'm going through this. You don't need to answer them now, but these are considerations, obviously, for going forward. The first is who, who's actually signing the contract? And whose money is being expended in the course of, you know, you're talking in art festival, as your hypothetical.
Right.
Those are the two questions that I start with. And they're cold bureaucratic questions, but those are kind of the necessary questions, because those identify, whose show is this? Whose project is this? At the end of the day, that helps determine what path forward, not do you have an arts commission or not, but how do you structure this particular event? Because we have models around that, whether it's a sponsorship model, or it's a collaboration model, or what have you. We have those models, but those are the two questions I've got out of the gate. The third question that occurs to me as I'm looking at this, and, you know, based on where the discussion's been going with some sort of in-house arts commission, based at least kind of reading the room here. And it goes back to something that's been identified in the memo and that Jack touched on earlier, is the notion that council had codified that commissions may not take independent action representing the city. So there's certainly a conversation that needs to be had between the commission and the council. Because part of that language that was put in there, and I remember this because it's my very first council meeting back in 2017, was make sure that the commissions do not get out in front of council. You know, there are seven members of a city council when fully staffed, and then you have four commissions in our current model of seven commissioners. So do you listen to the 28 commissioners that are out there, or the seven members?
Well, I concur, there's oversight.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, definitely oversight.
Really weird, really quick. But part of the framework that you have baked into the current version of the code is that you do have those opportunities for conversation, those touch points in there. You know, we're about to undergo one of those in the next coming week as we're looking at the 2026 work plan. You know, so you have those opportunities in there. Your current model provides for those opportunities to percolate upward from the commissions to say, hey, here's this idea that we're thinking about. Council, do we have council backing on this? And council can say, yes, no, or maybe we'd like to know some more, there's a variation of answers in there. But those are the initial questions I have as I'm listening to that. None of the, I mean, there's an answer in there, but at the end of the day, a lot of those are conversations. Is that a showstopper for putting together an independent arts commission? Probably not. But it's considerations to have in mind as we have the conversation and continue to go forward. And unquestionably, there'll be some of these growing pains as you have, would be arts commissioners saying, well, we really wouldn't do this. You know, how do we do that and how do we navigate that? Because an arts commission, you know, just like your planning commission is sort of an independent commission unto itself because they have a statutory authority, I could see an arts commission similarly kind of saying, well, we're different, we're special, but we're also new. So, you know, they're going to come in with a new sense of focus, and the two other, three other commissions are going to have a similar feel. So you're going to have to juggle that. And I don't have an easy answer for you at the time that we've got.
I think there's another study session to, I think, to bet all that out.
Yeah. My initial thought, yeah, my initial thought, at least going forward, based on at least reading the room and the comments, maybe to start mocking up some proposed code language, just to kind of look, touch, see, feel. See if we're hitting kind of the mark of where the conversation's gone, because this is not going to be a one more study session and we're passing legislation conversation with council, I don't think. And there's certainly unanswered questions going on, empty as questions on the comments too.
Okay. Are you done?
Just a couple of things, just some challenges for what we had in putting this together, kind of addressing some of Mayor Protem's comments. So costs themselves, whether, whichever way you go, so the traditional commission is probably slightly more expensive, but it's only because you're paying probably two hours of overtime a month for a staff member. Pretty nominal, not a major thing. The overall cost would be, at least if we can have a, if you did the independent group, but it sounds like we don't want to go that way. Overall cost really is what is council's appetite for how much you want to spend. I mean, it's for art any given budget cycle. But then, but ultimately, that would be either modeled, that would be irrespective of that. And then you could give some agency to the, you know, the commission itself that could be part of the, in the formation of it that you want them to look at, you know, fundraising or things like that. That could be an option for certain things. I know other agencies have that within certain restrictions, right? You have to be, they have to do similar to like we did with, you know, sponsorships of the, you know, party or whatever. So they would have to be direct, kind of strict guidelines, but you could give them that authority to at least look out for that. And we've done that very, in the, a long time ago, like the park commission had some involvement with some of the, some of the other friend group of, you know, some of the beautification stuff we had years ago. But, so I think those things, and I think just in general, you know, from a recommendation from our standpoint, you know, like I said, we don't have a strong feeling either way, so that was the challenge of what, what to produce. So we really wanted the guidance from council, what do you want to see? And I think we have that. I think we have, you know, we can put together, you know, looking at some of the other options out there. Does council generally, one of the questions, from a membership standpoint, it does appear that most of the groups around like to have a little bit bigger than the seven members. I don't know if that's, if you guys have strong feelings of that? Both Lakewood, Tacoma, and other agencies around have that larger, like a 15-member group.
Lakewood's seven to 15, depending on-
Yeah, but they've, they have it currently as 15. But, so I don't know if that, do you have a preference on that? Do you want, is it a range, or, yeah?
Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My understanding- My understanding, when I talk with local jurisdictions, when they've had that 15-member panel, they're having a heck of a time getting people to come to meetings.
Yeah.
While, you know, we use the seven-member model, I wouldn't be opposed to an 11-member exception to this commission if we're getting representative, you know, sufficient representation of what we want. But I wouldn't be wild and crazy about anything bigger than that, only because we want our commissions to be engaged, we want people to be present, and we want them to be part of the process. So, you know, when you start getting up to 15, 20, whatever that number is, it becomes unwieldy and impossible. So that's my thought, but I think it makes sense.
Councilmember McCluskey. And by the way, we're down to about eight minutes on the meeting, so let's...
Okay. So I like the sweet spot, because it's just the common commission number that we have is of seven.
Seven, okay.
And that, it just depends, who are the seven that's on the, on the commission? That would, maybe at times, they could offer guests to come in, I don't know. But I like the seven, but I really would like each of the seven members to have some sort of art expertise in a, in the, it's going to be hard in the wide breadth of what art is defined, if we can ever define what art is, on the panel. But at least they'll have some background to base their decisions, you know, decisions upon. Whether it's an arts and crafter, or a traditional art, an art educator, or someone who has done art, art presentations and other sort of art projects, not only projects, but activities within a city, because part of it is, we want to do some spontaneous pop-up art that invites everyone who just wants to be creative for that day or that moment to inspire their artistic and creative side.
Yeah. I think, yeah, we can definitely write something, and I'd probably recommend that we set it up that they either recommend it or should have that experience, so there's flexibility depending on what we have. Because it could be just someone super interested in it, too. But yeah, I think that would make sense, and that gives council the authority when they're selecting, it gives you flexibility, too.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and summarize, if everybody's done with comments, just where I think, what I've heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong. If you guys could come back to us with a proposal that addresses the commission model, the regular commission model, seven or more, if you think it's appropriate for, based on what you've decided, seven to 11, that kind of time range. And if you could go back to the original proposal in there, there were certain things that the commission could do that were relatively low-cost, like recognize arts in the community, establish artist laureates of various kinds, that kind of thing. Add those to the objectives, and then getting back to the funding, because our project's hard to discuss funding upfront, we don't have a dedicated funding stream to art. But what, it's going to be project-specific. So how would we, what would be the best mechanism or to fund a project where we want to do a public-private partnership of some kind, to work with the commission and the city to fund, let's say we want to build another statue of a horse somewhere, or a duck somewhere, or something like that? It's going to cost more money than we might want to take out of our general fund. How would we partner? What would be the legal mechanisms for making something like that happen? Did I capture what everybody's concerned about? Am I missing something?
Absolutely, within that model, whatever he's offered.
Yeah, if you come back with a model that would address the basic commission, because the commission can do things without building a single thing. They can recognize arts all day long.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. But having a mechanism so that when we actually want to put out a piece of sculpture, or art, or performance art, or pop-up art, or whatever it is, that there's a mechanism for a public-private partnership to help fund it. And I think that covers...
Two quick follow-ups on that.
Sure.
There's discussion earlier about a youth member, as we're putting this together, is there still a desire for a youth member? I'm seeing head nods. I thought the answer was...
Say that again.
Was there a desire for a youth member, or a seat set aside?
I don't see a, I'm not in favor of it being required, but I would like to make a good faith effort to have an opportunity.
I might write it as a should, and then count, we can have that discussion, and bring it back.
Okay.
And then two, on the funding issue that MPT raised a second ago, that may be under a different framework or rubric, but we can certainly talk about that separately as we put our collective brain trust over together.
And I think that's something that we're going to have to address if we want to go forward with this. How we do it, I have no idea, I'm not the legal guy here. But I would really appreciate if that, we could better understand how that could work.
And on the other membership thing, I know we talked about it, do you like the idea that like Tacoma and Lakewood have, require one of the positions to be a professional artist, a working artist on it, or just in general in the field, I guess?
When you say professional artist, though, should, I mean, because, I mean...
They are very definite, has to be, they basically have.
In any form of art? A professional writer, a professional...
It could be any, they aren't specific, it just says a, an active working artist. So it could be someone, I guess, has an Etsy store.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's hard to define, right? I mean, I think that leaves it so wide.
So, okay.
But I think should, I am in favor of should.
Should fine.
And then what about...
Unless you define the professional artist that you're looking for.
Yeah, they're pretty, and then education position, or just say something you want to reach out to, or not necessarily addressed?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay, sounds good. I think we got everything we need.
Don't get lost in the weeds.
All right, so thank you all very much. Item number 12 adjourned. This concludes our meeting. Thank you. Good night.
Nice job, Mayor Protem.
Good job.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.